When I start the agenda of this session of reorganization meeting, we have various items on corporate organization, reorganization matters. We have Resolutions 011501, we adopt 2013 meeting schedule. Resolution 502, designation of official newspapers for 2015. Resolution 503, council designation of liaison to various authority boards and commissions for 2015. Resolution 504, designation of council member to planning board 2015. She's council member, Ms. Garlatti. Resolution 505, designation of council member to board of directors of City Market for 2015. Council member John Anderson. Resolution 506, approve 2015 temporary city budget. Resolution 507, designation of bank repositories and cash management plan for 2015. Resolution 508, fixed interest rate of delinquent taxes and order and service charges for 2015. Resolution 509, authorize cancellation of tax delinquencies of less than $10 in 2015. Resolution 510, authorize direct making charges and cost associated with tax sale. Resolution 511, authorize chief financial officer to sell on anticipation of capital notes at sale for 2015. Resolution 512, authorize tax collector to make cash refunds less than $10 for 2015. Resolution 513, authorize senior engineer to execute lagging regulatory permits, idole forms, and solar erosion and sediment control applications in 2015. Resolution 514, authorize senior engineer and mayor to execute rather range of permit forms in 2015. Resolution 515, authorize senior engineer to execute more permits and indemnity agreements in 2015. Resolution 516, authorize tax assessor to file tax appeals and give special counsel file counter claims before the municipal tax board or the university tax court. Resolution 517, designate public agency compliance officer, Joan Mitanza, for 2015. Resolution 518, resolution authorizing contract reserve and approve state contract vendors for contracting units by the purchasing agent. Resolution 519, authorize advertising publicity of goods for various goods, supplies, and services in 2015. Resolution 520, authorize senior engineer to sign site commutation project documents submitted to NJPEP. Resolution 521, advise and consent to mayor appointments of department heads, Thomas Larkin, TK Shan, Mr. Attorney Attorney, Skip Sebrecy, Director of Engineering, Toby Schedics, Director of Finance, Robert Rolls, Director of Fire, Glenn Patterson, Director of Planning, Economy Development, Anthony Caputo, Director of Police, Stephen Sebrecny, Director of Public Works, Dave Levins, Director of Social Services, and Alexei Wallace, Director of Water. Resolution 522, advise and consent to partner authority for reappointment, Anthony Barber, Senior, and the term expires December 31st, 2015. I'm sorry, 2019. Resolution 523, advise and consent to construction board of affairs reappointment and appointment of Norman Collett expires the term on December 31st, 2016, and Thomas Valentin, and the term expires December 31st, 2016. Resolution 524, advise and consent to board of ethics reappointment and appointment, name Robbie Varda, this term expires December 31st, 2019, and Robert Racine, and the term expires on December 31st, 2018. Resolution 525, advise and consent to Citizens Tax Service Council, Mariti Cola. Resolution 526, advise and consent to Library Board of Trustees reappointment, Devo Rassili, and the term expires on December 31st, 2019. Resolution 527, advise and consent to municipal prosecutors and municipal public defenders reappointments and appointment. Municipal prosecutors, Robert Goodwin, Robert Adelio, and Mark Sintron. Public defenders, Richard Bigg and Peter Ventris, and the term expires for them on December 31st, 2015. Resolution 528, advise and consent to rent levelling board reappointments and appointments. David Gomez, regular member, his term will expire December 31st, 2017. Patrick Feaster as an alternate, and her term will expire December 31st, 2015. Brian Kemp is an alternate member, student representative, and his term will expire December 31st, 2015. And Brandon Kaplan, tenant representative, and his term will expire on December 31st, 2017. Resolution 529, advise and consent to cable television, citizen advisory community appointments, John Barulli Miller, term expires December 31st, 2016. Jennifer Brashow, term expires December 31st, 2015. Cosalito Soto, the term expires December 31st, 2017. Jane Currie, term expires December 31st, 2016. And Alvin Fair, his term expires on December 31st, 2017. We have Resolution 530, advise and consent to community arts council reappointments and appointments. Name Christian Cultiva, Dan Horn, Brian Asdosofi, Michael Tullman, and the term expires on December 31st, 2016. There's no other addresses on the first reading that we have. Who are going to those resolutions this time? Resolutions. Resolution 011531, approve agenda amendment. Resolution 532, approve payable from 2014 to 1215. Resolution 533, authorize refund for retail tax sales certificates. And Resolution 534, approve amendment of Resolution 011431, prime point LLC, for extension of contract for one additional year, 2015 municipal services. This is a 12-month contract commencing on January 1st, 2015, and ending on December 31st, 2015. The amount is $45,000. We have Resolution 535, approve over the contract with Robert Johnson Physicians Enterprise PA for 2015 physician services. The term is 12 months, commencing January 1st, 2015, and ending on December 31st, 2015. Not to exceed $42,500. This is for an open, no problem. At this time, that is the next. It's time to start the meeting.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Council Vice President Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Garlatti.
Present.
Council President Escobar.
Here. Please be advised that the notice of progress of the public, Open Public Meeting Act has been complied with and satisfied. Is that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and condo for all public meetings of the municipal council of the City of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on an appropriate voting board in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely, the Home News Tribune. Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's time, as close for a moment, to warn North American Americans who have lost their lives in the war in Afghanistan. Thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve the regular eight minutes.
Motion.
Oh, can I have those?
Yeah.
Well, this one? Can we have so this is now? Okay. My mistake. I beg you correctly. Now, we're going to reorganization matters before we start. I'd like to adjutant a motion to elect William Hamilton as a temporary chairperson. For the council.
Second.
Role call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Council President, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have to adopt elect tonight a council president. A council vice president. It's my honor to call for nominations. We also have council president in the years 2015 and 2016.
And we know who to pick any year. I second.
In the absence of any other nominations, I'd ask the clerk to cast an unanimous vote for Mr. Egan.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
And Council President Egan.
You want to take the vice president's?
Sure. Now, I'll call for a nomination for vice president.
I nominate Glenn Garlatti.
Second.
Go on, favor. You got him. Role call, please.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming. And Council President Egan.
Yes.
Just before Mr. Egan and Mr. Fleming say something, I just want to say that I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity for the last two years to serve as the council president. It has been a pleasure. It has been a learning experience. I hope that we can continue growing and learning from what we have come up to now. And I expect nobody for the best moving forward. So, thank you.
All right, Kevin Egan. You solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
The United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And the State of New Jersey.
And the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same. To the government's established.
To the government's established.
In the United States.
In the United States. And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people. And do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of.
Council President.
City of New Brunswick. According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
I, Glenn Fleming. Do solemnly swear. That I will support. The Constitution. Of the United States. And the Constitution. Of the State of New Jersey. And I will bear true faith. And allegiance to the same. And to the government's established. In the United States. And in this state. Under the authority. Of the people. I do further solemnly swear. That I will faithfully. And partially. And justly perform. All the duties. Of the office of. Council Vice President. Of the City of New Brunswick. According to the best of my ability. So, help me go.
First, let me say, Happy New Year to everybody in the room. This is our first meeting of the new year, so I want to wish everybody a happy and healthy new year. Secondly, I want to thank Councilwoman Escobar for a great job that she's done the last two years. I know that it's not easy sitting up here and people, you know, not expecting the answer they want to hear, or not giving the proper or, you know, fast enough actions. But I think she did an outstanding job, and I'm very proud to have her as a councilwoman. So, thank you very much. Also, tonight, you see the resolutions that Mr. Hamilton, our good friend, a little emotional because I know he is an outdoor kid. But he served this city well for 28 years plus. He's done an outstanding job, excuse me, for the people of the city of New Brunswick. I'm very proud to call him a friend, a father figure. And I wish him the best of luck. I really think he did a great job. Thank you. You're our good friend, TK Shanmi. Congratulations. I know you're going to do a good job for us here at the city council. You're certainly more than capable, and we believe we are in good hands as you've come to support as a city attorney. So, congratulations. You know, we here at the city council, you know, we don't ever get everything right. I understand that. But we certainly try to do the city, the city's business as best and as well as we can. We're here to help this people, the city of New Brunswick, help them with all the great services that we provide. We're here all to really to work together. And I really, I really believe that we want to do that. But on another note, that doesn't mean that we're up here to be disrespected and to be shouted at and to be, you know, a punching bag for people. So, please keep that in mind when you're addressing the council. If there's anything to do to help you, believe me, we will help you. We're here to help you. So, just keep that in mind. We can agree to disagree on a lot of issues, which I'm sure we will. But at the end, we welcome your suggestions. Doesn't mean that we're going to adhere to them or we're going to agree to them. But we're not a closed-door government. We're wide open. We're wide open here. And for anybody to think anything differently is mistaken. Because we are one of the best urban cities in the state, probably the best, and maybe in the country. So, like again, I wish everybody a Happy New Year. Things are going to be just a little bit different. As far as when we address the council, I'm going to ask everybody, if you're wearing a hat during the pledge of allegiance, you're going to take your hat off. If you're going to address the council with a hat on, you're going to take your hat off. We're going to be respectful to each other. Once we're not respectful to each other, then it becomes something that we really don't want here in the government. So, with that, I would ask if my newly-elected vice president has any words to say. I would turn the open floor to him. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I give honor to God, who's ahead of my life. And I want to thank my family, thank my council colleagues, everybody that you have given me this honor today. I want to congratulate again Council President Escobar. She's not going anywhere. She just shifted one seat over. But she's taken a lot over the last two years, the last four years. She's taken a lot, and she's been very patient, you know. She always served with a smile. I haven't seen, well, maybe one or two times. I started to get a little bit upset. But for the most part, she still says, "Congratulations, thank you," when addressing. And she's been nothing but respectful. And I just want to give her one more round of applause, you know, and everybody that served. And as I said, everybody that serves in city government, you know, we thank you and all the citizens. Two years ago, when I took the oath for the first time, I remember standing up here and I reached for lofty goals where I said, you know, I want to represent a certain segment of population. And I've been trying to represent a segment, but I've learned that's about, it's about serving all the members of the city. And not just the people who come to the meetings, but there's a silent majority of people in New Brunswick. They pay their taxes every day. They send their kids to school. They want to live in nice neighborhoods, and they feel like, oh, my one's going off. I need to turn that off. And they feel like at times that, you know, the story of New Brunswick, their voices are being drowned out. Because there's some people that will try to tell you that our city is nothing more than where a place where crime is running rampant, where there's corruption everywhere, there's cover-ups. That's not the city that we live in, and that's not the city that we know. And I'm going to do my best for the next two years to talk about the good things about this city. And we have our problems, but we're able to pull together in hard times and in tough times. Because our city is a city, we don't run away. We're not torn apart by racial lines, social, economic lines. A community is a poor group of people that pull together. We're a group up here together. We're a group up here. And like Kevin said, he said, "We're not necessarily punching bags. We're citizens. We love this city just as much as everybody else." So, when we pull together, that means that we come together as a community. We don't walk away, or we don't shun diversity in this city, but we embrace diversity. This is the only city where you see where we have a former Irishman right here, a son of an Irishman, who can come together and become the president. His father served this city for years. Now, he's serving. We have a former mayor's daughter. Her mother, sometimes she'll never tell you the story about how her mother saved this city from the racial and ethnic strife. We got a Latina here who's been very patient over the years. We have a man here. His mother was an educator. Now, he's an educator also. This is a diverse group. I'm just a humble person. You know, I got, I'm a son of a nurse. My father had a ninth-grade education. And I just try to tell people each and every day that, whatever we do in this city, there's always opportunity. The United States of America is a land of opportunity. It's not a land that shuns people away. If the opportunity is in front of you, if you just do the right things, play by the rules, do what you're supposed to do, you can do anything that you want. And I'm humbled today by being, I'm humbled today by being given this enormous responsibility. And I just hope that for the next two years, four years, however long we're on here, that we'll be able to do better and we move forward together. And that goes for anybody else that's a citizen. We work, we're here to work with you. We're not working against people. But we also have to, you have to meet us halfway at times, you know, because we have to tell the story. We're one of the best. We're not even deep one of the best. We are the model for urban revitalization all across the country right now. And we're going to start telling that story. That's something to be proud of. New Brunswick isn't a place to leave. New Brunswick's a place to come to. And that's the story that we're going to tell for the next two years. Thank you very much. I thank my colleagues. God bless you all, and may God bless the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank God, your five minutes was almost done. Okay, I think we're going to move right into our resolutions on the reorganization. Am I correct, Mr. Hamilton?
You're correct.
Okay, so we're going to have, we have Resolution 501 through Resolution 530, I believe it is. Yes, it is. I'm resolving. Would any member of the public like to comment on any of these resolutions? Good evening, buddy.
Good evening. Congratulations, Council President. My name's Charles Cradaville. I hail from New Brunswick. I do want to ask about a couple of the resolutions. I see a lot of appointments to volunteer and pay positions. And I do want to ask about 527, is the prosecutors and the public defenders. Can you tell me what the salary is for these jobs and what the benefits are?
Yeah, Mr. Larkin, please.
Varying degrees of salary. I'd have to go back to my desk and get that information if you'd like it tonight. And these gentlemen are, in terms of benefits, are in the pension system. Some of them are in the pension system at the moment. I think there's some scrutiny as to whether they will stay there. Some of them are not in the pension system at all. Their compensation ranges in the $15,000 to $20,000 range. But again, I'd have to go back and look at everyone's individual.
Mr. Cradaville, you can get your five figures.
That's okay. Just could you just tell me which ones are in the pension system and which ones are not?
Mr. Beach.
He's no longer.
Is no longer. Mr. Ventress is a new hire, so he would not be in the system. I think Mr. Goodwin is the only one whose current pensionability is being scrutinized. I don't think Mr. Adocio or Sintron are in first.
So, that was for, I'm sorry, Adocio and Sintron are not.
Not in first.
Thank you. I have some questions on 528. I know Mr. Gomez. I know Mr. Feaster, and I think they're fine representatives. Do you, can you tell me, has anybody on the council met Mr. Kaplan?
I have not met Mr. Kaplan. But I did, I did speak to the mayor on all the amendments. And I asked him about certain appointments, and I liked what he told me about some people. And I asked for some names on this board here, and he told me they were all Saudi.
Understood. Can you tell me, have you met, have any of the council met Mr. Kaplan?
I have not.
Anybody on the council familiar with him? Can you ask your colleagues?
I have, maybe briefly, I have a phone racing activity for the town club, CDC.
Okay. And do you think he's qualified for the board?
I believe somebody didn't give me any indication that he was not.
Right. And just for the record, what are the qualifications for a rent control board member in this particular position?
He's going to be a tenant in this particular slot.
He has to be a tenant.
In New Brunswick?
In New Brunswick. I believe, I believe he lives in, or he lives, I believe he lives in the Colony House.
Okay. Can you tell me, is he related to the real estate developer with the same name?
The W dad, I don't know that.
It's going to be important to know for somebody on the rent levelling board, if they were related to the Kaplan Real Estate.
I just, I just answer honestly.
I understand. Is he related to the superintendent or the former housing inspector?
I don't know. No. Anybody know? He's not. He's not.
I'm not.
What? Oh, he's here right now. There you go.
Great. Great. Is, can you tell me, is, you familiar with his schooling, his credentials, educational?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, I rise and, you know, you asked, what can you do to help? I am asking for your help today. I would ask that you please hold this appointment. I have provided information to the planning director and to the city spokesperson and to the mayor's office regarding this person, that they are unfit for service on any of these boards. I've witnessed this person spit in my general direction without provocation. It's Kelly's Corner Bar. I've also witnessed him lie to my boss.
Mr. Cradaville, it seems like a personal, a personal thing you have against the guy. If you guys want to take this outside after recess. I don't understand. It seems like it's a personal situation.
I don't think it's fair for you to interrupt me, Council President. I'm not going to interrupt you. I would just like for you to hear me out, and I'm asking you to hold this.
You're slandering the person that sits there and raided a room behind you.
Everything I'm saying is 100% true.
According to who?
I am telling you.
According to who?
I'm telling you things I witnessed. Are you allowing me to introduce this?
You may, you may keep speaking.
Thank you. So, I'll be honest, I have no ill will, no ill will towards this person, but I do not want to see him appointed to any position of power. I have ample evidence, and numerous witnesses prepared to support this claim. He's gone out of his way to file false police complaints and lie to people in an attempt to get me fired from my job. He lists among his educational credentials the Desisto School, which is in fact recognized as a cult. And the Desisto School was shut down by the Massachusetts State Government in 2004, around the same time he was there. He's told me that he hopes one day to open a similar boarding school. I encourage you to look at the coverage that AC-15 in Arizona has done about this horrible, horrible school. I, again, I don't have any ill will towards this man, but I would be happy to provide you with a police report that shows that he and his wife have harassed and victimized me on multiple occasions. I have that police report. I could email it to you right now. If you'd like to read it over. And as you may have figured out, he was also present for a similar incident where Hayden's wife came to my location, filed a false police report, and that resulted in a lawsuit. And I'm sure you've read about that on NJ.com, that the county prosecutor's office has dropped the charge against me after being presented with video evidence that showed Mr. Kaplan and his wife had fabricated allegations against me. This type of behavior is childish, and it damages the very important cause of domestic violence survivors who depend on laws to protect them. Mr. Kaplan and his wife inappropriately abused the laws in an attempt to harm and inconvenience me, a person who wants nothing to do with them. This is not the type of person that ought to be representing the city's tens of thousands of tenants. Sorry, is something funny?
Yes, I was saying something.
Oh, so you weren't listening?
I wasn't.
Should I say it again?
No.
Okay. Well, this is not the type of person that ought to be representing the city's tens of thousands of tenants. I have sympathy for him despite his efforts to harm me and my livelihood, but he is certainly unfit for service on the rent levelling board or any other appointed position. or any other appointed position. With all due respect, I request that you please, please, hold this item. Will you please do that for me tonight, Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville.
I just wanted to answer. Will you please do that for me?
No.
Okay. Why?
This is not a question and answer period here. I just gave you my answer. Do you have anything else on the resolutions, sir?
Yeah, I do want to say that everybody in, Resolution ends in 30. I know them all, and they're all great people, and I think that's a good set of people that you're appointing. I am very, very serious. Can you just please ask your colleagues and Mr. Patterson if they've received any complaints about Mr. Kaplan?
No.
Could you ask the planning director, please?
Mr. Patterson, have you received any complaints?
I assume what Mr. Cradaville is referring to are a number of emails that some friends of Mr. Cradaville submitted, which had similar statements to what Mr. Cradaville just stated to you. I asked Mr. Kaplan if he wanted to serve on the rent control board. He said he was willing to do it. I've known Mr. Kaplan through various other boards in town. I thought he was a good person to ask to serve in this capacity. As you've stated, Mr. Council President, Mr. Cradaville and Mr. Kaplan seem to have some personal issues there. But, you know, I'm not a close friend of Mr. Kaplan's, whatever, but through my experience of working with him with other boards, he seemed like a good person to have on some of our boards in town.
You still stand by his nomination?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. I just.
Is there anything on resolutions, sir?
Yeah, yeah, I just, I just want to urge you one last time to please hold this appointment and look into it. I'm not asking you to vote no. I'm asking you to hold it and look into the allegations that I would have brought to you had this been made public before tonight. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Brendan Kaplan. I would like to speak on my own nomination and address some of the comments that were uttered in this room tonight.
Sure, we have five minutes, sir.
Sure thing, I'll take much less than that, I'm sure. First of all, I really want to thank Director Patterson for nominating me. And I was advised by the mayor's office and by Director Patterson that Mr. Cradaville had sent a variety of slanderous emails about me. Mr. Cradaville has a long history of playing fast and loose with the truth with his publication in order to carve out some piece of power for himself. I respect the intelligence behind that, but I don't really respect the result of it. I have here right now civil restraints that were entered in by the family court of Middlesex County. Mr. Cradaville unfortunately used to domestically abuse my wife prior to my knowing her. He would throw her down the stairs and do a variety of other things. And I didn't really want anything to do with it, and so we stayed out of it. For five years, he's followed us around. And when we discovered pictures, in fact, were alerted to pictures by a good friend of ours appearing in his blog from the inside of our building and of us, we were quite concerned and brought a restraining order against him for which he was arrested. Mr. Cradaville signed a statement that was entered into the record by a judge where he agrees to not harm my career, to not follow me around anymore, to not follow my wife around anymore, and in general, to cease and desist all of his harassing activities. Obviously, he is not a man of his word and is unable to follow that agreement. That's fine. I don't think anything bad needs to happen to him. I don't think he needs to be punished. I think, quite frankly, he needs to have some sort of enforced setting where he has the time to speak about his feelings and be barred from, you know, intoxication. And hopefully, he can leave me and my wife alone. I'm really excited to serve on the rent control board. I have a lot of qualifications that uniquely suit me to do so. I've always sat at the intersection of multiple interest groups, even from the time of my birth, with an Irish Catholic ballet dancer mother from Missoula, Montana, and a Jewish electrical engineer from New York City. Grew up dirt poor. In fact, he couldn't go to college at first because there was a quota on the number of Jews they allowed into college. So I've been around the block. I've seen quite a few things. I've always been relied upon by my friends when I was a student at Rutgers University to represent our houses to landlords. I've always done a very good job of that. And in fact, at other times, I have represented landlords' interests to various members of my households who were, you know, unfortunately, as kids, not behaving properly. So I've been on both sides of the issues before, and I really look forward to serving New Brunswick and the rest of the community that I've lived in for 10 years. So thank you guys very much for your time, and sorry for the unpleasantness.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville.
Yep.
Anybody else have resolutions?
My name is Anthony Larvina. We live at 20 Jefferson Avenue. I'd like to congratulate you, Council President, and Council Vice President for being voted on to be Vice President and Council President. I do have a question about R-11503. It's first page up at the top here. It's a designation of liaisons to various authorities, boards, and commissions, and all of them are council members. Are these council members required to go to the meetings, the public meetings of those various boards and all that such?
No.
Maybe, I don't know, change that. So they, maybe not have to, but strongly encourage them to kind of go to those public meetings? I mean, it would make some semblance of sense, I guess, that they would be present during the public meeting so they can see what's going on and bring that back to the council.
Take an ordinance amendment to require that. That would, that's not my idea. It's just what the city attorney said. Yes.
I just want to add that I'm the liaison to the housing authorities. So usually, as much as I can, I do attend those meetings.
Okay. Oh, that's definitely clear here. Well, let me, as a citizen, I strongly encourage the members of the council to go to the respective public meetings of the boards and authorities that they're assigned to. The school board, Mr. Fleming, very, very important thing. Things happen there.
And I'm in touch, I already have a private line between me and the board members, and my background is in education, so we're in touch all the time. So it's not like, and sometimes there, every now and then, their meeting may conflict with one of ours.
Of course.
And also, and it's just like, when we go to certain meetings, you know, when we go to certain meetings, I know my feelings. It's just like people always request the mayor to come to this meeting. You know, it's a different body, and it takes on, it'll turn a meeting into something else, which it's not. So that's why, for that line of communication in between.
I definitely see where you're coming from with that. But I would hope that you wouldn't feel that way going to a school board meeting, just to sit and observe and to see what the papers are, what people have to say during the public portion. That's really all I have with the, in terms of number three. And then, to this, the rent leveling board, 28. First, I'd like to withhold the appointment of Mr. Kaplan. Not vote no, just holding. There have been some allegations leveled that seem pretty harsh. If you could look into them as a council and then vote on it at another meeting, next meeting, it's only two weeks away. I don't, I don't see that that would be so horrible. Also, would, is the rent leveling board a public meeting?
Yes.
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 Would Mr. Cradaville's presence be prohibited at that board meeting? Or any of Mr. Cradaville's friends or acquaintances, or friends of friends, or relatives?
I don't, no, I don't think his friends would be. But I don't know if he has a, if there's a law, if he has a restraining order against it too. I guess then he maybe would be.
For the record, I know. There's no orders against it.
I said if.
If. For the record.
We should wait till the movie comes out for this thing. Listen, this is, can we move on? Go on, sir.
Yeah, and I understand your feelings of wanting to move on and past this, and we've definitely had a good 10 minutes of comments about it. And again, I just respectfully ask that you hold the one appointment.
Any other thing on the resolutions?
That's all I got for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's correct. To past Council President, we held the last meeting, as a matter of fact.
That's for the household, two meetings ago.
Two meetings ago.
We held it just to go into it with the mayor. So he just looked at it, and we're confident of your point.
Thank you. Anybody like, would anybody like to do the resolutions? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, no more.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
President Egan?
Yes. We also have Resolution 531. Resolutions, I should say, 531 to 535. Would anybody like to comment on those particular resolutions? I'll wait for you, Charlie. Thank you, sir.
I'm good, I'm good.
You sure?
Yeah.
Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah. I do have a question, the number five, 535. You award a contract, what's, oh, I'm sorry, I'm just reading now. Physician services, it's just for doctors on the level, or how does that work?
Yes, we contract with a physician in the area every year to assist us with pre-employment physicals for all of our hires. We rely on that office also to do some return-to-work physicals and examinations for us. And we are also relying on this particular physician service to assist us with the random drug testing program out of the fire department.
Thank you.
Sounds good?
Seeing no other?
Move to the resolution.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
President Egan?
Yes. Okay, we now move to the public portion of the meeting. Anybody wish to address the council, or any council member wish to address the public at this time? Five-minute rules in effect, sir.
Roger that.
Thank you.
Anthony Larvina, 20 Jefferson Avenue. So I'm not sure of the name of the park in French Street, where French Street and Jersey Avenue come together. But that park has about 20 or so streetlights, it looks like. They are all out, all of them. None of them are on at night. And I would like to get the electricity turned back on to those lights because it's very dark there. And at the widest point of the park, it's pretty wide, and it presents, it kind of looks a little intimidating over there.
Is there none of the lights at work?
None. And I've driven past at multiple different times during the night, like 9:00 o'clock, because sometimes with the daylight savings time, they, it doesn't come on right away when it's dark. But I've driven past on multiple occasions at different times at night. I think the latest was about 10 or 11 o'clock at night, and they were not on.
We'll certainly get, we'll get right on that tomorrow.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Another thing.
Please warn you of the park.
Mind you, pardon, let me call that Warmer Memorial Park. Warmer Memorial Park, for your records.
Thank you.
The Mexican community of Oaxaca.
Yeah.
All right. And then, again, with French Street, if we could possibly paint, repaint crosswalks that are currently going across French Street. And then, I know, or at least I've seen on the three offset intersections, Sedan being the most prominent, there aren't any crosswalks. It seems like that were painted or have worn away. It doesn't seem like any crosswalks have been put down ever going across French Street. And those intersections are particularly dangerous places to try to cross the street. And if we could try to make them a little bit safer, or maybe that would be great in that corridor. Also, can I have an update on the Easton Avenue lighting study that I know one of your city employees has been doing?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hello. The police department did an evaluation on the lights on Easton Avenue, as well as lights that are on the side streets of Easton Avenue. And yesterday, I reported the lights that were out, the lights that were dim, as well as ordered new lights.
And how many new lights are we getting? Are we getting an entire side of the street to be lit?
Eight new lights.
Eight new lights.
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Well, I can't wait to, to put in. Very interested to see that. That's going to be great. Thank you so much. And the Riders Lane, the small piece of it that is in New Brunswick, it creates an S-turn, it's two 90-degree turns, and then it goes into that circle right on George Street there. There's a very prominent bus stop at that, at the one turn. And then there's a number of university buildings that are further down Riders Lane. On multiple occasions, I've been driving down Riders Lane at night and seeing students walking down the side of the road. And it's, there's no shoulder, it's just the, just probably a line-wide on the side of the road there. It's very dangerous, it's very dark, there's not many lights. If we could put in the sidewalk, that would be amazing. I mean, I don't think anybody's been hit yet, but I know driving down Riders Lane, it's, there's definitely been close calls. It's a very thin road, which I think helps us speed, but we need some.
I don't even know if there's any room for a sign. I don't even know if there's any room for a sign. Wow, you're right. You've got wood going there, you have all those different intersections there. There's kids walking all over the place here. People coming from Sears. There's people coming from the Labor Center on the right side there.
I think you could do some, something on the side that the Rutgers cats, I think it's Cats and Backdoor.
Cats and Back on the left area.
They have a fence there, maybe.
Last one was proximal, I mean, that was a county road. It was a county road.
I'll talk to you.
All right.
All right. That's all I have for today. Thank you so much for the update on Easton.
You're welcome.
Good evening once again. Charles Cradaville from New Brunswick. I want to say, off the start, I'm disappointed. And, you know, you say that you don't want the council to be a punching bag. And, you know, I would suggest that when you ignore reasonable pleas from people in the public, like you just did, you invite criticism, you invite that. And I'll do my best to resist the urge, but, you know, we ask very reasonably for something. And I do want to also address your comment. You said, "I'll wait for the movie." Good point. When are these meetings going to be televised on cable TV? Well, I mean, is that something that's going to happen this year?
I don't have an answer for you for that, sir.
Is that something you'll support?
No, not at this time.
You don't want the meetings?
Well, I don't know. I won't be, I'm not, I'm not close to it. Think we'll look into it through the year? I don't know.
Okay. Because it's been said that there's new technology that you're going to be able to put them on TV. I think you've got nothing to lose, and you give people some, maybe some entertainment too sometimes. So I need to ask you about several crime situations. Was there a car fire last night on Commercial Avenue? And can you confirm whether that was connected to all the car fires over the summer? Or? There's no connection.
Kaplan?
There's no connection. But there was a car fire.
Anybody respond that there was a car fire?
Yes, there was.
Stand up, please, if you're involved.
Yeah, there was a car fire this morning in the Barker's house.
Okay. Any details on what caused it?
Right now, they're still under investigation by the Post Office. It's an area fire.
Okay. How about the stabbing on January 1st at Sedan Railroad? Can you confirm that? What's the status?
Captain, may I?
You'd have to give me more details. I would regret it. Okay, I mean, this is a pretty big deal. There's a person stabbed. They found him on corner Joyce Kilmer and Sedan. Really no update on that?
Give me a timeline, a date. When you blindside me, I can't just pull stuff out of my head, Charlie.
I emailed the captain about this. There's no doubt about that.
You email me a hundred times a day sometimes.
I don't email anyone a hundred times a day. I email people a reasonable amount of serious crime.
Mr. Cradaville, I'll make sure he's going to get you the information.
Okay, so I'll change my line of, a little bit here. I want to, I want to say that we fought very hard last year because there were crimes in the neighborhood where I was living, Fifth and Sixth Ward. And we got Rutgers to agree to put out a crime alert anytime there was just a serious assault or shooting or something like that. And I think that's been good. It means there's, the perception of there's more crime because more people are hearing about it, but it's good because people are more alert. And there might be more crimes being solved because people are getting the information quickly through Rutgers. And I'm just here to say, I think every neighborhood in New Brunswick deserves that. And I would like to see the New Brunswick Police announce serious crimes that happen, even if they haven't been solved yet, so that maybe they can help, get the public to help solve them, and also help the public avoid being victims. and also help the public avoid being victims. And I think that when there's a stabbing, and then an armed robbery in the same neighborhood the next day, the police ought to make an announcement, and that, as far as I know, did not occur. So that's my two cents on that.
Can we stop right there?
Yes.
We did, but the captain would like to respond. Oh, sure.
I hear what Mr. Cradaville is saying, and there is a time to respond immediately and there is a time not to. As you saw in the press release today, which you responded to immediately on your blog, there is a time not to give that information. You see the way things are related and the crimes are solved. If that stuff was just blabbed out immediately, when you sent me an email saying what happened, that wouldn't have been solved the way it was. So there's a time to give stuff out, and there's a time not to. I hear what you're saying, and sometimes you're right, but sometimes you're wrong. Okay? Fair enough. Well, I hope you keep this in mind in 2015. Thank you for those words, Captain. I do need to ask, how many murders were there in 2014?
Four.
Four. And how many non-fatal shootings?
I don't know.
Okay. So, just for the record, that's a question I've asked, and I'm hoping to get an answer. I also want to know about the increase in assaults. By my count, by the, according to state police, first nine months of 2014, there was a 46% increase in assaults in New Brunswick, while the statewide trend was actually going the opposite direction, going down. Can you tell me, is there any, what do you think the reason is for that?
I don't know. Is that a true statistic?
Yes, that is.
Okay. Captain?
I have not a reason either.
Okay, can you tell me, what is the city doing about it?
I can't tell you what we're doing about.
Breaks my heart to hear that. Can you, please?
I'm not trying to break your heart, I'm just telling the truth.
Okay, well.
The police really put people in.
I mean, our police are doing an outstanding job every day. I mean, I believe, if there's a hole in the crack, they try to fix it. They, you know, they certainly don't want it to be a, we certainly, I believe, that all the police officers do not want a crime-ridden city in the city of New Brunswick. And they're doing the best, and if there's a problem, their superiors are trying to fix the problems. But I am not involved in the day-to-day operations of the police, and you know that. So I wouldn't know that answer to that question.
This would be exactly why you would want to have an update at every meeting about public safety. What changed, what's going up, what's going down, what's being done about it? And honestly, there's an increase in crime, and there's no explanation for what's behind it, and no stated plan for what's being done about it. I agree with you, I don't think any of the cops want there to be a lot of crime, but there needs to be a plan, and that plan, some of those aspects of those plans need to be shared with the public, that's.
And that's your opinion, and you're telling it too.
Okay, well, I think you should want to know what's being done about it, and I think all of us want to know, and we're depending on you to help us find out.
Thank you.
Can I ask about the police voice recognition software? Do they have voice recognition software?
Do we have voice recognition software, Captain?
Henry Larson? Be more elaborate.
I got, if you recall, the last meeting, I used the term "voice recognition," and in the same breath, I maybe I misspoke. I did email Mr. Cradaville, answered his question from last meeting. Again, repeated myself that maybe I misspoke on the voice recognition issue and suggested he contact Captain Miller for any other questions. So I might have started the whole thing by misspeaking two weeks ago.
Right, I've asked, I emailed an auditor back from Captain Miller, so I'm asking here tonight, does the police department have software that could be called voice recognition software? A voice recognition system?
Voice recognition, meaning if I want it to speak, let me know what it is.
Yeah, you're asking me? Yeah.
No, no.
Okay.
Here you go.
I want to just address a big problem in downtown. Don't worry, he's on it.
All right. See what's going on?
I'm good.
See, I told you, you don't need any more time.
At the Farron Wall, oh, man, at the Farron Wall, they've got fences around everything.
Yes.
And you, basically, we say we're a transit-friendly city, but right across from the train station, you've got a bus stop now where people have nowhere to sit and nowhere to seek shelter from the elements. So you've got people leaning up against this fence, and that's all they've got at that suburban bus stop there. Please, I know, with the parking, you have the liaison in the parking, like, put a bench out there, put a shelter out there. I'm appalled at the status of some of the bus shelters in town, and you know, there's like a whole route, the Fifth and Sixth Ward shovel that goes around. There's no stop, there's no shelters along the stop, so people don't mind it as much as they were.
I know where you're going, I'll look into that.
I would like to see more shelters and better shelters in 2015, and that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville. Would anybody else like to address the council at this time? Seeing none?
Yes.
Good evening, newly elected Mr. President, I believe.
Yes, sir.
Okay. My name is Lenny Mohammed, I am the representative of the Honorable Minister Louis Fox, here in the city of New Brunswick in Somerset. I wanted to publicly just come forward and thank outgoing President, Ms. Escobar, Councilwoman Escobar, for her assistance in an event that we had this past summer. I did not get a chance to do that publicly, and I think I would be remiss in my duty not to thank you and the council for your support in an effort where we were able to have, I believe, nearly 300 people from the city of New Brunswick in Viziers Park for benefit or actually a basketball game that was a sign of our ability to have events with very little police presence needed and have a peaceful event. I think it sets the tone for 2015, that we can look forward to doing more events in the community. So to the gentleman's cry of more policing, or what are we going to do to solve the rise in assaults, it's our responsibility, and we take that personally, to be out, to help police captains and elected officials to serve our community. So to all of you for the city council, I wanted to thank you for your service in 2014, but I definitely wanted to take a moment to offer our assistance in any way that we can to help make our community that much safer and that much better for a better quality of life for everyone. So Councilwoman Escobar, thank you, and to all of you for your service, we thank you. And if we can be of my office of any assistance, we ask that you don't hesitate to call us. So thank you, we appreciate you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else want to address the council at this time? Anyone else?
Good evening, newly elected President.
Thank you.
I don't know if you can hold up to what your father did, you know?
I don't know either.
But it's in the DNA. I'd like to thank Minister Lenny Mohammed, Nation of Islam, for 2014, working closely with me and the council with Dr. King programs that we were able to bring about. We call them steps, and we're getting ready to take another step. I also like to thank, because I appreciate Bill Hamilton, he'd been here, I've lived in the city all my life. He always advised me right, he was always a gentleman. If we disagree, we disagree, but I look at him as a go-to friend. So I congratulate you for being councilman. I also congratulate the Vice President, Mr. Glenn Fleming, who have worked with the community, myself, and Minister Mohammed, and the city council in 2014. Also like to thank the Shingin' girl over there, I know that Shingin', her mother, you know, because when it came down to the Dr. King program and the mural and everything, she was the first person that I spoke to from the backyard of my family yard. So she was like the first support to say, "Hey, Jimmy, it was okay," you know what I mean? So, you know, when we passed out recognition and stuff like that, you know, I'm not perfect, you know? But Council President Escobar, you did a hell of a job, you know? Now, just let me say this, and Dr. King's birthday is January 15th. We want to do something on his birthday. Let me check with that space. We want to take another step. In my area, when I come outside to sweep or whatever I do, there's always people asking me questions, there's always, what do you think about this, what do you think about that, you know? And on the 15th this year, we found a building, I'll let the business administrator know Monday because he always say I'm last minute, but I'm on time. And you go work with, yeah. But I found a building, and to me, a lot of people, they don't like to go to church, they don't want to go down to the police department, they don't want to go to the miles, they need a neutral place where they can just go and vent, you know? And to be listened to, you know, that somebody care, you know? And if everything go all right, which I'll call you later on, Glenn, I just want to say that, it's something that look okay so far. On that corner, we were nice, we were right on time to make that Dr. King corner. We got some history here, we got something that other communities could look at, you know, we're ahead of the curve here. If it works out, we can have like a little Dr. King center there with history, and it could be like, it could be used for multiple things. Multiple things, you know? For, like Charlie saying, it was an incident at Joyce Kilmer and Sedan, people may not know, people want to have a meeting, okay, what can we do about it? My whole thing is solutions. You know, I'm not going to spend my time complaining. You know, we've been moving good, and for 2015, you know, I think it's going to be good. You know, Council President, or the other councilmen, when we have these events, been showing up.
I visited the mural, but I did not show up.
Oh, I know, I know, but for this event, and with all the things that's happening in the communities, with the police and everything like that, you know, this might be a good time, even though we might all have differences, certainly I have differences with folks, but the thing about it is solutions, and how we go about straightening that out. So I think that this event that we're trying to put together, this with Councilman Glenn, I mean, I know John Anderson is always here, you know, and it's about all of us. So, you know, I'll get to you later Monday.
Does it require council action?
That's what I'm going to get to you, I don't know. You know, we want to be on time. And also want to congratulate TJ Sammy for being the, for his promotion, and I hope that we can have a good year. God bless you, Mr. Lee, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council at this time? Seeing any? Which do you jerk?
So moved. Second.
Go on.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?